Okay, so this is, we're ready to open the public hearing for our RGFA Site Plan Approval for 18 Sanderson Road. And we've given this, this hearing about 45 minutes, a quarter of the time. Jay, are you gonna be making the presentation?
Yes, I'll start it off.
All right, so if we could just try to limit the presentation to 20 minutes and then comments from the board for 15, and then follow that with any comments from the public, that would be, that would be great. Just to introduce ourselves, I'm Al Alat, I'm the chairman of the planning board. Other members?
Suzanne Wright, planning board member.
David Nelson.
Steve Oppenheimer.
Roy Chalamet.
Okay, Jay, go ahead. So identify yourself too, if you could.
Jay Lloyd from the Justice Company, representing the client on civil engineer. So this is just a GIS plot that I took down from the town in Southview, and I didn't bring this to the actual sidewalk, but I kinda wanted to give a comparison because of the weird shape of the lot, and the subdivision, people had an idea of what was going on in that area. So the butters that showed up at the sidewalk actually were from 40 West, which is our rear butter from the side over here, is Wesley Road. So this is Sanderson Lane, the subdivision approved about 1995, 1996, somewhere in there. This is the last lot that was actually developed for the, for the actual subdivision. We submitted for our building permit back in 2012. House was just below 6,000 square feet. Went through DPW, went through Board of Health, went through Building Apartment. Filed for temporary COAs January 2013. Got a DPW sign off, Board of Health sign off, and Building Apartment sign off for those, for the temporary COAs, I mean, stick it to occupancy. And then we filed for these changes back in February, and the changes were basically finishing off above the existing garage, so no footprint change there, but also an expansion of the garage from a three bay garage to a fourth bay. And then above the fourth bay will be that porch which we had shown in the architecturals. So to accommodate this little change here, some of the walkways, which is a slight increase in impervious area, we only do a minor modification, which is these little galley systems getting added to the recharge basin for the drainage. So the drainage is pretty easy for this site because it's already been reviewed through the DPW for their approvals, for the operation maintenance agreements. Subdick system's already been installed, which is a Geoflow appropriate system, so, and then we have the reserve area in the back. Everything you see there other than the proposed garage here and the section above the existing garage, everything is basically on the original building permit and most of it's on construction or been constructed to date. We have, as we mentioned here, we have the patels in the back, goes down to the pool area, and this is that bunker which actually has inside, has the generator inside the bunker area. We have the proposed fence that basically runs along the backside down through that area, up along the actual, between the trees and the retaining wall in the front, comes along to that side over there. It's a rez A project site, it's all conformant, it's everything prior to 1997, so 200 feet of frontage, a little more than lot width. We do have a buffer zone on the project site from a wetland that's basically that bleeds out onto Wesley Road. There's actually also a wetland that comes up on this side from a former detention basin that David mentioned, and it's a huge detention basin for the project site, I mean for that subdivision.
This house is already sitting there, Jay, you didn't happen to bring photographs of it?
We do have some photographs, yep.
Okay. Paul, you can scroll over there.
Hi there, I'm Angela Curney, landscape planner, also working on the project. Here are a couple photographs of the existing conditions as of today. These a week or so ago, so this is what the front of the house currently looks like. This was just a Photoshop perspective that we originally submitted, and we've modified that to actually add more plantings and, excuse me, screening to narrow the view from the street to the front entrance. Looking, so this is looking to the north, and then looking west. So this slope to the, looking east, and then this is the set for beach field going south. So there's, there's evergreen screening along all of the property lines, and then this is looking directly south over the pool. You can see more screening, and then this is the wetland buffer zone in the back, and stormwater system, and then wrapping back up the other side, the west side of the property, more screening here. There's a couple details for the fence to surround the pool. Either side of the house would be this fence going from the house over to this property line, and then down near the bottom of the house coming across just above the beach field over to the chain link between the trees and the law. So the chain link will be on the inside of the screening trees.
On both the backside and the backside of the property?
Correct. And then this will be the more decorative fence to get from the house out to the property Planting plan, you can see all the screening trees that have been put in are marked on the plan. We are proposing, there are no additional trees to be removed. We're proposing additional trees in the dark green as evergreen and light green as deciduous. Like I mentioned earlier, the goal is to kind of close in at the driveway entrance and screen provide kind of, these are sort of idea of what we're going for, and the canopy over the driveway, so you can drive through that and then maintain that view from the road just at the front entrance. And add additional screening up this slope with the fence behind the screening trees so that the views are down and to the backyard with the pool are screened from the road. All the plants are regionally native, non-invasive species. Well, there's some non-regional native plants closer to the house, foundation plantings.
Are you doing lighting, Secretary Lloyd?
We are doing lighting. For the landscape, we're proposing 12,500 lumens total, and that includes the lighting that will be on the house as well as in the landscape. They would like, let's see here. Let me just set this here. Is that okay?
We have, I can hold it.
A pendant, I can hold it up, just they're kind of small specs, but, so the first is the pendant light, there's four of those, all of them are over porches where we cover a roof above. The second is a wall sconce, and those are proposed at the, three at the garage, one on the backside of the garage because there's a door coming in from this side. And then there's a set of double doors near the kitchen, and a set of double doors in the living room, so those would have the, the wall sconces on either side of the door. Again, all of those are, have a roof above them.
So those aren't dark sky compliant either, or they are?
Sconce.
These two fixtures are not dark sky compliant. They have, they would like to have them with clear glass. I know there's an option of getting frosted glass for the pendant, I'm sure we could find a frosted glass for that or have it made, but it doesn't specifically say on the spec sheet for that. All of the other lights are dark sky. There's another wall sconce that goes along the back of the house, this is all doors that open out to the pool and the patio, so these are just to safety egress, egress lights. Couple path lights on, along the front path, one of the, this is a, like a porch path in the back walkway, a couple on there, and then getting down the back steps. A very low lumen pool light, four of those, only at 400 lumens each, and one spa light. And a couple of wall lights as well as, for the guest parking and the main parking out of the driveway. That is, this small fixture. Lumen at those? Nope?
Okay, is that for presentations?
Yes.
All right. Dave, engineering?
Behind us is storm water, just a little bit of background, so I also saw the, this subdivision came pre-RGFA, but it has some inklings of RGFA stuff in it, so I think even like house style, location, and then there were like provisions for like stormwater in it, so I even saw like the stormwater when they were getting the original building permit, along with original screening, because it was just this weird hybrid, but just to kind of, so you guys know, like, yeah, that's, when this happened, whatever it was, that was 20 years ago, right?
Yeah, it was 95, 96.
You know, like the, the house location and style, right?
I think it was just, there was the, they had no cuts areas.
Yeah.
They talked, and then drainage, that was the two that they put in.
We're kind of already a part of this.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just, you know, if you were wondering why things ended up where they were or whatever. But.
What was, what was the no cuts? I don't understand.
There's, the entire roadway had a no cut that went all the way around except for driveway cuts, and then a lot of the locks had along the rear because they're, whether they're outskirts, so in our case, Wesley Road subdivision here, this whole section and then the next own neighborhood all had like a 10 or 15 foot no cut area.
Okay.
You can see it on the side.
I was just kind of looking right there.
That's that little.
So where is it here? Is I see it there?
So it's, I'm sorry, so it's the back property line for 10 feet?
No cut.
There's no cut, yeah.
No cut trees?
Yeah.
All right, so it does have sort of a little bit of a border, I know disturb is what you're saying, so no cut, no disturb is kind of the same thing?
Yeah. What we did is we took it as we could add plantings to it, but we couldn't take any down.
Okay.
So there's some changes in impervious surface?
Correct.
And what are the net changes?
So the, I don't have the summary in front of me, but to the, what got increased was this original walkway was pervious. This walkway was originally pervious. And then we had a slightly smaller driveway, and so this entire sub area all runs this way, and so what we had to do was offset that by adding in these couple, the couple galleys to that recharge basin to offset that change. So it wasn't, it wasn't a large amount of impervious area, but because this was, it used to be a vacant lot with all, basically with all, with trees, any slight change in the pervious area shows a big number, so we had to add that, something was a nine galleys to the recharge basin to make it work.
And the additional garages over as built slab?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep, that was gonna be originally a patio area that was, you know, worked out for the backyard, and so, but then as people started looking at it, they said, well, we could use it as an expansion for the garage.
And how many total lumens did you say you had?
12,500.
All right, we were, this says 10,293, this is the one dated February 18th of this year?
Yep, we've been, I submitted some modified plans, which you don't have yet, they just barely got them on the money. We were making modifications to everything on last week with some lighting and some planting changes, adding additional plants, so. So the engineering hasn't changed, so everything you have to do for the engineering is correct, is the, some lighting changes and the planting, I said, the enhancements to the plantings.
So I imagine that Jay communicated to your clients about our, our feelings about dark sky compliant fixtures, because for good reasons, you know, lots of good reasons, go on their website and figure about it, but where can we go with this?
Yep, so I mentioned then that, that of course dark skies preferred. There are times where I know that we have allowed lights to be non-dark sky, if they're below porch areas, if they're, if their porch, you know, hangs down and the pendant's still above it, so there's no light pollution, stuff like that, so in this case, I think there's only probably one spot that that's gonna happen, which is the upper deck on this. The other ones are, even though they won't, nothing's gonna go up, you will still have the glare on some of them, so, but as Angela mentioned, those can be all shaded, so then you would no longer have really that glare, so.
Well, no, she said frosted glass, it was the clear glass, which is pretty different from.
Well, we have allowed the frosted glass before. Oh, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say we.
Yeah. What's a royalty thing going on?
No, so at least it's not going up into the sky, you know, you're just going down with.
And they do all have solid tops.
They all have solid tops, and even the wall sconce, it is a solid top, solid top there for the two that we're talking about that are dark skies.
So high on them were they coming down?
Right, well, so then what we're seeing, what, the issue with it would be, are we looking at the bird?
Yeah.
And our neighbors seeing the bird on the floor of it?
Right.
Which is not, you know, pleasant.
Exactly, yeah, so I think if with, with this one up here, I don't think we would be, with the other ones, of course, especially the, those sconces, yes, because those, that light source is 100% exposed. And then on the, on the pendant lights, if they're frosted, then you wouldn't be looking at the bird.
That's kind of an impression that we allow soft at lights when they're up like these, you know, recessed can type things more than, more than anything that actually hangs down, unless you actually have a roof that comes down.
Exactly, yeah, so that's.
You need like a roof to come down, so you don't actually see that fixture.
Exactly, that's, that's what I was mentioning.
And that's what the situation is?
So that's, that's what we have, it's, it's gonna come down a little bit so we could, it could be up in that area, it all depends on how far it drops, but I think the ability there to do that is there.
But will that ability be utilized? Or will it still be dropping down?
If it wouldn't be, if that's what we're saying now, if it wouldn't be, then we'd definitely have to come in front of you for a modification, yeah. But I think that's the intent, is we all, we all want to do the same thing as a, these are fixtures that the client likes, and I think that we can at least modify the pendant lights to meet the intent of the dark sky lights. The sconces are an element, that's something else we might, yeah.
Where do you guys end up?
I defer to David.
Well, there was a butter there that expressed concern about the second floor light, which I think is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, so that'd be that side, so the, so you get better every day.
As well, so it's on this porch up here, so, and their house is down beyond these trees, so they're really looking up to that.
Yeah, it's this, that a butter there.
And are you saying that that's the one that would be covered by the roof coming down or not?
Yeah.
Because when I looked up there yesterday.
I think it's a straight roof.
Isn't it?
But it's flat.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a vaulted ceiling.
Yeah, okay, then I'm incorrect there, I probably, yeah, I thought there was a vaulted ceiling, so I did it, they would allow it to hide it.
I think where the, where the pendants, no, I don't, I don't think the pendants can be hidden because even, these are the two front porches where they'll be, the front door and then the porch door, even those are flat.
Yeah, all those, yeah, the other was definitely connected.
So they would be dark sky compliant.
So, what are you guys, where are you? Well, sometimes we have allowed frosted enclosures, you know.
Under, under ceilings?
Well, no, sometimes wall sconces with a, with, you know, with a frosted enclosure, it, it just depends on the circumstances and the, and the, what might have gone before. Sometimes we've retrofitted fixtures that were installed before with clear ones, we've replaced those with frosted, it's.
However, we, we're now coming, new construction, as if this is coming before us for a full site plan review, which it is, correct? Okay.
And the standard, the standard has been dark sky compliant or possibly cans up to the ceiling if people really want to light there, although that's, you know, not the kind of industrial style or contemporary.
Or you hunt for a dark sky compliant one that has a full cut.
So these, I'm sorry.
So that's what we're saying, this is coming before us for a full site plan review, and so we, we think that we really need to apply our normal full site plan review standards.
Our normal standards.
Okay.
In terms of lighting.
So that's what you guys are saying?
Yeah, did you hear what we said?
Exactly, I was gonna say, these were the ones we originally submitted, which actually are frosted lenses, but if you're saying that, then, because this was, this would be the sconce, and that's the pendant light, and again, replaced by that, but.
Well, were those approved previously by the board?
No, these, that was our original approval, those were there as we made last week, so.
Six dozen.
So, and the ones that you're suggesting now are different from that?
Yeah, exactly, so that's what I was, what I'm, if these were amenable to you, we could replace them, the four pendant lights with this pendant light and the, one of those, the two sconces.
And the difference is basically that those are frosted and the ones you're proposing now aren't.
Yeah.
And you can't see the bulb in these, so this would be the wall sconce, again, frosted and a solid top, solid top frosted for the pendant. And then we would want to keep these.
Which are those are dark sky?
Wall sconces, which are dark sky, at the back, all along the floor.
That makes sense to me, to you. The ones with.
Oh, all the dark sky compliant ones, yes.
Yeah.
But I think there's some great looking light fixtures out there that are dark sky compliant that can still give your clients the look that they might like.
As opposed to.
Right, as opposed to the frosted things, yeah.
Instead of just the frosted ones, correct.
And, and who did we work with, this landscape architect over on the concrete road who could not find dark sky compliant?
And then she created.
And then she made her own beautiful ones.
Well, that was an exterior, that was the.
I know, I know, but I'm saying.
I don't know if the biolite worked yet.
Oh my God, I'll never find this, but then she created her own. But there are some good looking ones out there, and I think that you can find something that'll be appropriate.
I think we could even, we could even talk about for now, like, I don't know, recessed lights, stuff like that into the, into the.
All right, so, so I think the message is, take a closer look at those two types of fixtures.
Yeah.
Dave, did you have anything else in engineering? We sort of got sidetracked on the lighting.
Now, the only other thing is, again, if you worry lots, any concern about storm water, the, the lots were designed to have impervious, have it unmitigated back 20 years ago, that's why the detention basin is so big. Today's standard, you have to mitigate the lot as it is today, so it's, you got double protection there. You know, they're mitigating on site, but even if they didn't, it goes to a basin that was sized for a specific amount of impervious.
Okay, so it's more than enough, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
All right. Kim, how about the landscaping?
I think it's fine, I mean, there's a lot of buffer along the property lines, and it's skin keeping with the character of the rest of the neighborhood, so I don't really have much comment at all.
The only, the only thing that comment I would make from this sidewalk that I'd like to add as a condition is that we know that in one specific instance, the pool fence is, it's four foot high fence sitting on a raised grade of three feet. So we know the building inspector told you that you, that he would.
He would have remarked, exactly.
But I think we're gonna need something in writing from him.
Okay.
To that effect.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just so, because otherwise we're authorizing something that the zoning biolite doesn't permit, which is a seven foot high fence at the setback.
And it's actually in two locations, right?
Yeah, it's where we go perpendicular to the, to the property lines, because on the outside we didn't do any disturbance, so that's all natural grade, the moment we come across in the front and the back.
And that's what, sort of this first perspective was the only place to come across, if you apply it strictly, is in the front. So then you're looking at a lot of screening right near the front door, and you actually see the fence from the road, whereas if we can drop it down, so that would mean it'd come all the way up along the road and then in at the front door, now we're looking at bringing it across, actually it'll be below a slope, so you won't see it from the road.
Right, my point is not that we're suggesting in different locations, but just that we, we don't have the authority to authorize that change, so.
Yep.
The building inspector does, so he needs to put something in writing so that we can, we can put it into our decision.
Understood.
Okay.
Where's the generator? Nobody's ever.
It's in the bunker.
In the bunker.
Here's the bunker?
It's, yeah, it's not theirs.
Yeah, so the, so we came up, mechanical bunker, I'll call it, so it's, it's basically the, there's a walkway that goes out onto it, there's a little fireplace with a glass godrail that goes around. On this side, there's a door that goes inside it, that generates inside it, same with the pool equipment, they're all inside it, so there's, there's no real sound for the neighbors.
Very nice.
Nice.
Is it below grade?
It's above grade.
It's above grade.
It's part of the RGFA, that's part of the stuff that they cut out.
Is it, I'm sure the top of the bunker?
Yes, actually.
I want to see that, is it cute?
It's a concrete.
Oh wow.
The top of the bunker's gonna be a patio, though.
Yeah, it's gonna be glass around it, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so the flash sign.
How's that work with internal combustion engines? I mean, like, how does it, is it okay?
Yeah, it was all approved by John, they had a data smith, everything has to do with the basically getting exhaust out, stuff like that for the generator.
I'm sure there are hovers in there.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, is it gonna be an outside barbecue or fireplace also?
On top of it, there's gonna be a fireplace.
A little chimney fire.
What a great thing.
Yeah, this is a great example of it working, and actually they're right next door to someone who has a generator that's very close to their property line.
And while we're talking about that, we did not include it in the plan, but what would be if we wanted to put a fence panel or two in front of that generator?
For baffling, you mean?
Yeah, so if the trees don't provide enough, so their generator is essentially right near the front lock and the garage, right on this property line. Would we have to come back, or is that something that we could write in to allow for like a solid wood fence panel?
My suggestion would be, that that would be, I think it would be something we'd want to look at, but we wouldn't need to schedule a full hearing for it, you know, it would just be a modification, that's, that's what I think we'd be looking at.
If it's a solid fence though, right up the property line, you may have to go to CBA for relief.
Not if it's less than 60.
Well, yeah, but that's not gonna attenuate a lot.
Well, it'll attenuate more than those shrubs will, which the vegetation does so little in.
Yeah, I think we could also like, you know, stagger it so.
You might make friends with the neighbors and suggest that they put a cover or attenuate, a sound attenuation cover over it.
I don't know if they make one, it's a commercial grade.
It's huge.
It needs to be, it basically needs a bunker.
I bet you you could make one for them.
We could.
It must have been installed well before we get on to the general.
Yeah, we honestly, you know, if they come back for any changes and we see it, we'll deal with it that way.
Well, it's too bad.
If we get there, we can bring in, you know, certainly don't want to do a whole fence just enough to block in front of it.
It probably, it may be less about the sound than it is about staring at the thing because it's right there.
I have a technical question. There's retaining wall along here.
Correct.
And the retaining wall qualifies as a structure.
If it's above.
Okay, a wall other than a retaining wall should be considered a structure if it's constructed of any masonry material including concrete and is 36 inches or more above existing natural grade. A retaining wall constructed of any material including riprap shall be considered a structure if it is 36 inches or more above existing natural grade. For the purposes of determining the height of stepped walls or retaining walls, 36 inches in height shall be measured in the aggregate vertically from existing natural grade highest point of the wall. So if it's considered of a structure, it's, it's allowed in the setbacks.
If it's less than three feet.
Okay, so just curious what the average is, because there's some sections of that wall that seem high to me.
Yeah, yeah, so the, this is actually the certified plot plan that was issued to the building, by which they signed off on, there's a couple notes that they're not, neither one of these walls, this wall and this wall, are structures, so what they are is that they're less than four feet of unbalanced fill, okay, because it's a cut wall, so when you looked at their former existing grade, this is about a, they're about 18 inches above the former existing grade.
Right.
There's about, so basically there's about a three foot cut in this area for the driveway, so they're, they're three feet 10 inches, so they're below four feet of unbalanced fill. So, they're, they're three feet, ten inches, so they're below four feet of unbalanced fill, and then they're, they're only eighteen inches above existing grade, so they don't qualify as a structure for the normals. Because what happens, Rob used to do is, people were trying to get away from the three foot, because it says three foot above existing grade, so people were putting as large of a cut wall as they wanted to. State code says, any wall with four feet of unbalanced fill is a structure. So, that's how we catch, that's how we figure out the cut wall when it becomes a structure, so. As long as you're below four feet of unbalanced fill for a cut wall, and you're not more than three feet above existing grade to the top of the wall, then you never qualify as a structure.
Okay. Even though it looks like seven feet, casual observer.
Hey, I understand that, that, that may be something to add to the list.
Oh, for the building change?
Sounds like a rober kind of interpretation, but I mean, everybody was thinking about positive retaining walls, nobody was thinking about negative retaining walls, so... We need to think about those, that's the message there.
Especially when they start adding, you know, when you have two of them together, like we did on Laura, you have two, three and a half foot, now you have a seven foot cut.
Right, yeah.
Back to landscaping, during the sidewalk, we noticed that there's bittersweet growing in the back, on a couple of mature trees. Is there a plan to deal with that?
Not on the property, that's what I'm...
Is it not on the property?
Those are the ones along the, along the path?
Yeah.
This is in the rear of the property? Yeah. Those are, those are on a trail.
There's a western forest trail, um, along where that wall is, and then it cuts over...
No, we're talking about the rear of the property.
There we go. So, um, these, there's three trees here, and that's actually not bittersweet on these trees, that's, um, uh, eunomus, climbing eunomus, but it still should be removed, um, and that's easy to cut at the base and cut it up high, and then the high stuff will fall out as it dies, and then you can either, um, cut and dab with, round up the stems, um, and those should die rather than having to constantly cut it and have it grow, and it's pretty hard to dig out the roots. Um, there is bittersweet on the front near Sanderson Lane in this grove, that's bittersweet, and that's gonna be a big one. The challenge is, this is also, is on this neighbor's property, as anything growing up these trees, like this looks like it's got bittersweet on it, that's all on the neighbor's property, um, but I think they would like to work with the neighbors to try and manage that area, and that would be the same treatment, cut it low, cut it high, let it die and fall out on its own, and manage the, um, the base cuts. Because you're not gonna be able to get in and get those roots without... And these, this tree honestly might be too far gone, where you need to just dig out that whole tree and put in some other trees.
Are those, are those trees, I'm sorry, I was not at the sidewalk, are those trees critical to, sort of between the neighbors, between, in terms of... I mean, I wonder if the neighbors understand that the trees are gonna die in pretty short order when they get totally enveloped by bittersweet.
I mean, they, they don't look, they've got plenty of screening, screening in their front, and their house is, is angled more straight on to Sanderson.
My question was mostly with, were they, do you think the neighbors might be interested in taking care of their trees, which they are going to lose?
No.
It's worth the conversation, you know, and certainly getting new canopy trees in there is important to maintain the, the character of the property. So, that's something, as we're working, we can, you know, and they're moved in now, they just moved in last weekend, so I'd be happy to, um, walk over with the owners and, and the, um, we have butters from the backside who are at the site visit, so I think there's already, um, a relationship established that we can tie to them.
Well, we always encourage neighbors to talk to each other, it's our job. I think the message from Roy was, if there is any bittersweet on any of the trees on your property, or other vines, if it's eunomus or creeper or whatever it is, then our suggestion would be...
Get it off.
Get it off.
Yep.
Um, and then of course, and then if it's on somebody else's property, then it's in your court. Sure.
Those two weeping willows that I see in that photo, um, I saw a couple of weeping willows there, but they were much closer together, like, they looked like they were on top of each other, that's the story of that.
Yeah, so a lot of the plants that were in a group in the front, they're just, um, being stockpiled. They are, so these actually were installed, and they've, they've been taken out because they wanna put them in different locations, um, and we have them identified, the new locations identified on the planting plan, um, and they should go back in the ground within the next, um, couple of weeks.
So, where they are right now, which was right next to each other, is just temporary?
Exactly, along with, um, some trees that they had moved from their other property, two Japanese maples, a really nice cherry tree, um, yeah, they're in, I think, stockpiled like right outside of this image right now, but those will all be, um, moved into different locations. So, one is, is proposed up front on the inside of this freestanding wall, and one is, we're gonna move to the end of the driveway. And then we're gonna get another one down at the end of the...
Which kind of trees are you talking about right now?
The weeping willows, specifically those.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I said one comment, I just spoke with the client, and they want to, wherever we have the pendant lights, change them off to recess lights, because we definitely have the company doing it. Um, I would have to give you a modified plan to do that, um, but that's definitely something that they want to do.
Okay.
Great, simplify simply.
Okay, so we'll continue the hearing to look at the draft decision, what day?
Um, ten thirty on the sixteenth.
Sixteenth of July. All right, so we'll continue to the sixteenth of July, we'll look at the draft decision. You need to give us a little bit of information about lighting fixtures and work on that memorandum from the building inspector.
Correct, yeah.
And so, even if they go with recess cans, then what they were saying for the...
Yeah, and what we'll do is, I'll get you dark sky sconces.
For the sconces. But if they wanna go with dark sky for the pendants, that's okay, too.
Yeah, if they can find something.
Good, perfect, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
And what is that? Oh, no, we saw this, we get, we get this on, she sent this to us online.
It's in a drop box, yeah, you can just go through the drop box and see what happened.
So, I have to, I did not study the store manner of management, because this is not, you know, like that. Can this, is this...
What's your point?
Well, it's, it, it, well, is it, is it an endorsement of the parking or not?
Need to be so.
Okay, it doesn't actually say that, it says he needs more information.
Well, it says on the bottom for, um, he wasn't at the sidewalk, and he wasn't present for discussion of the fact that Cambridge School said that they would open the facility to neighbors, so he didn't know how many neighbors, and that, oh, that would impact the parking.
So, my question, so, I, I hit the question back to you, does it need anything? And you said, what's your point? I think I made my point, what is your answer?
Well, I think the, everything but the last paragraph, he's okay with it.
But the last paragraph?
But the last paragraph, so...
Says he's not. So, how is it changing? You can send it there.
They provide information, so they think they're making...
So, okay, he approves this apartment, except for non-Cambridge School of Western students, is not included in this review, that's all. He's specifically doing, listening to that, so, apparently not, but he gets a proud, a proud status, right?
Right, but, well, because it's one of our whole bunch.
Well, I guess we can say that they can allow, love them, they go to the building. And that's what we have to say, that has to be added into the, uh, whole thing. Every board meeting we have, we're, we're like, yeah, that little thing, yeah, doesn't that come out?
I, it's rings just...
Sue, is he here?
No.
Huh? What's going on?
Well, no, it'll be here eventually, it's a slow drift, it's just mostly the morning.
That's what I was, that's why we were just asking, Betsy, and the answer I had was, what's your point?
Yeah, that's a hundred and ninety-seven, twenty-three, that's a hundred and ninety plus four, that's a hundred and ninety-four, and he says we'll have at least a hundred and eighty-one.
Well, a hundred and ninety-four is more than a hundred and eighty-one.
What's a hundred and eighty-one?
I don't know. Mark cases?
Come on, don't put these up, we get admission, right?
For the cameras.
No, that's fine, that's fine, stay there.
Oh, they're just bringing up?
Yeah.